My name is Robert Rip. I reside at 77 Sunset Road, Massapequio, New York, 11758. Today's date is December 8, 2016. The time is 8:31 a.m. Compiling this information in regards to incidents on July 27, 2016. The town maintains a website. I am viewing that website right now, specifically the Town Board Meetings page on the Internet. It's available for all residents to see. And on the page, the town provides the Town Board calendars, the resolutions, the minutes, and the videos. Today, I am paying specific attention to July 12. I'll be opening up the link to the video. As you can see, when you follow the link, you're then given the choice to review public comments or action calendar. I'll be viewing the action calendar portion of the video. And at the same time, I will be reviewing the minutes. You can read it. It's July 12, 2016, 11:01 a.m. First thing I'd like to point out that the town has posted unofficial minutes. These have not been signed. I am making allegations of multiple omissions of my statements within this official meeting and statements of others, I believe. And I find it interesting that the town has posted an unofficial transcript. All right, so what I'm gonna do is, I've fast-forwarded to the beginning of the action calendar. And you can go to the town's webpage and do this yourself. The time is 53:13. The entire video is 2 hours and 40 seconds according to the town's clock. It's available on the lower-left corner of the page. And we're going to read along with the transcripts as the video plays. Then I will point out to you the omissions and the minutes where you will hear people speaking, including myself, and for some reason, what was said was left out of the record. All right, so let's begin. My mistake. At least it proves that we're live. And I'm a boob. Okay, here we go.
Supervisor, I'll make a motion that this public hearing be closed and the decision be voted on today?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. And let's proceed with the call. We have no other hearings, I believe, right? Let's proceed with the call of the regular action calendar.
We have a motion to adopt Resolution Number P916 and TF1216. On the motion?
So moved.
Okay. Now, this is the first instance I'd like to point out. Now, I don't understand why this is done. And I've looked at, or I've reviewed, all of the minutes, official and unofficial, from January to date. And what you'll notice is, Mr. Altadonna says, "May I have a motion to adopt Resolution P916 and TF1216?" But he never makes this statement. Personal resolution number P916 to P16, PA16 to PA16, resolutions related to personnel in various departments. The video goes right from the town clerk saying, "May I have a motion to adopt Resolution P916 and P12," right to Councilman Muscarrella saying, "So moved." Now, as we go on, you're gonna notice that they do this in every instance. And in my opinion, if you were reviewing these official minutes of the meeting, you would read this and you would assume that Mr. Altadonna actually read this information onto the record, which is not what's happening. Right? The reason that they have these minutes is to keep an official record of what's happening in the meeting, and they're falsifying it. All right, now I'm gonna move on and continue the meeting.
Motion made by Councilman Muscarrella, seconded by Councilman McEnam. On the vote, Supervisor Vendido.
Jim, Jimmy, could we get an explanation on that? On the two-year person? There's somebody on for, I guess, it's not as a new hire, but it's really not a new hire, right? Could we get an explanation on that?
Sure. I think I know the explanation, but I, rather than, I think this is someone who was a trainee, and now we're compelled by civil service law to move him up in grade.
Here's a call this person was put into.
Well, let me finish. Move him because he's satisfactorily completed his probation period.
Yeah, probation period's over. And civil service only allows us to leave that for any person in a training position for two years. Either they pass probation or they don't, and then we just have to automatically make them whatever the one position is. In this case, it's a maintenance mechanic, trainee, going to a maintenance mechanic one.
What is the salary differential?
$1,013.
No change? All right, you're good? Everybody ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Altadonna?
On the vote, Supervisor Vendido?
Aye.
Councilman Muscarrella?
Aye.
Councilman McEnam?
No on P916, yes on TF1216.
I always go first on the first one.
Councilman Cashin Gano?
Aye.
Councilman Pinto?
Aye.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Aye.
Motion to adopt P916 passes with five ayes and one no. Motion to adopt TF1216 passes with six ayes. May I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 346, 2016 to 369, 2016. On the motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So now, this is the second incident, where if you're reading what's supposed to be the official minutes of what's happening, you're gonna come to the conclusion that the town clerk now read all this resolution information into the record. It's every resolution that's on the calendar is what it is. Page after page of it. And here's where we come up, where McEnam seconds, and then we'll continue the meeting now.
By Councilman Muscarrella, seconded by Councilman McEnam. You have various speakers on 347, 348, 349, 350, 351, 352.
All right, so let's start. I got Robert Rip on one.
Can we go, can we vote on the amendment to 347 first before we listen to the comments?
No, I think you want to hear the comments on it first. But you know what? It would be so, with all these forms and all these results, did you call whole calendar?
I can't because you're tabling some.
Oh.
You're tabling 370.
All right, what did we go up to?
We went from 346 to 369.
Somebody help me there at the procedural table. Can we, it'd be a lot easier if we presented the whole calendar, and then we wouldn't have to have speakers shuffling up and down, back and forth. So can we table, can we take the, what is it? How many tables are there?
Two tables.
Can we take the two tables out of order and then present the whole calendar? Can we do that? Okay. Let's do that. Let's call the two matters which the board wants to table, and then go back and call the entire calendar, the remaining, call the remaining entire calendar.
Okay. May I have a motion to table Resolution Number 370, 2016. On the motion?
So moved. Okay, so again, they added it in. He never read it in.
Motion made by Councilman Muscarrella, seconded by Councilman McEnam. On the vote, Supervisor Vendido?
Aye.
Councilman Muscarrella?
Aye.
Councilman McEnam?
Aye.
Councilman Cashin Gano?
Aye.
Councilman Pinto?
Aye.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Aye.
We have a motion to table Resolution Number 389, 2016. On the motion?
Okay, so this is all false statements, too? He never read that in there?
Motion made by Councilman Muscarrella, seconded by Councilman McEnam. On the vote, Supervisor Vendido?
Aye.
Councilman Muscarrella?
Aye.
Councilman McEnam?
Aye.
Councilman Cashin Gano?
Aye.
Councilman Pinto?
Aye.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Aye.
Now I would just put the whole calendar before the assembly, and then we don't have to worry about what numbers.
We have a motion to adopt Resolutions Number 346 through 392. On the motion?
So moved.
Okay. They stopped it because this is again on the motion, and we go to "so moved," but, you know, the public is supposed to believe that all this was read into the record. All right, this particular minutes isn't signed, but I believe there are quite a few other ones that, every single one is done like this, and there are plenty of that are signed. So I have no idea why the person doing this transcription would do this. I don't know if somebody told her to do it, if she just took it upon her own to do it. To be honest with you, I think that she's handing in a transcription, and she's getting back an edited copy, and then she's doing what she's told. Look, none of this, none of this was read into the record. Here we are, "so moved."
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Muscarrella, seconded by Councilman McEnam.
We missed 93, Jim. 93 is up. No, that's all. No, it's gonna suspend.
All right. And now the entire calendar is before the assembly.
That's correct.
Okay, Robert Rip, you're free to speak on all the, I got you for 347, 368, 370, 374, 387, 388, and 389.
Thank you. My name is Robert Rip again. I'm from Massapequio, New York. On 347, this is a contract that looks to renew, or rather, authorization or resolution to renew contract with Francis Corver and Associates.
Yeah, before you do that, Robert, my recollection is I, where's Councilman Cashin Gano? Where's the Councilman Pinto? I wanted to make a clarification on this.
Yes, and I think Councilman Pinto can explain.
Just, yeah, go ahead. I think that, I think we want this noted for the final resolution as well. I'm sorry.
We want an amended resolution to take out the two future extension options.
Any reference to any extensions.
After your public comment, you have a motion to amend the resolution.
Okay, all right, Robert, go ahead.
I think the goal of the resolution is to pay outstanding monies and just deal with that issue, so that's what the amendment does.
I'm sorry, so you're gonna remove the mutually agreed-upon annual extensions?
Yes.
So what's the purpose of the motion, of the resolution on today?
The purpose of the resolution is to pay within monies already budgeted, services already rendered by the entities involved at Corver and whoever else is involved. I think there were two, I think.
Thank you. They left Corver's name out.
If you look at the resolution in the third paragraph and the fifth paragraph, there's a reference to extensions?
Right.
And those will be deleted.
Thank you.
I didn't want to create the impression that contracts are somehow being extended.
That was all left out.
That's why, that's why.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You got it. 68. I wanted to ask you this, the policy and the procedures for disclosures intended or expected to reach investors. I noticed in some of the backups that, the background, paragraph 2.2, the federal securities law, it reads that under the securities law, the town must exercise due care in preparing disclosure documents that are used to sell or tender for securities to avoid material misstatements or omissions, and may not knowingly or recklessly include material misstatements or misleading statements in other disclosure documents while its securities are outstanding. Bond council opinions may help to establish care, but are no defense to an action for failing to disclose a known material. I'd like to know, did we have such a procedure in place prior to this? And is this procedure being enacted now in regards to some issues that we may be having or some responsibilities that the town may not have been adhering to up to now?
Bob Gadd, you already popped up.
Yeah, this is something that came about by the most recent bonding transaction. The underwriters requested this. Bond council would have never given us opinion on any of our previous indebtedures if it wasn't. They just wanted to belt and suspend us with the new underwriter. So it's not, nothing, these things were being followed all along. They just wanted a formal policy put forth by the Town Board.
Okay, but I think, but I think what Mr. Rip is asking is, are these policies that were in place before? Is this something?
Not in a written form. The current underwriter requested that the Town Board adopt the policies that we have been following all along.
Okay, okay. There's your answer.
Thank you very much. 370 was tabled, right?
370's been tabled, yes.
374 is a resolution approving plan specifications and construction cost estimates for John Burns Park for a soccer field. And I'm just really concerned with the state of the financial condition of the town. I mean, we, this, like, to me, this is something that should be discussed by the financial task force that you created. I don't, I don't know with everything that's going on if we should be doing another replacement soccer field.
We're replacing the existing field. It's worn out, it's over 10 years old. We'll put in a new tariff down.
All right, can you tell me, did the financial board meet to discuss this at all?
I think, you know what? I think we're getting, better get some clarification here. What started out as a task force, I think that's what the name was used when we were scurrying to react to the bond rating agency's downgrade of the town. I think Joe Pinto and I, and I forget who else we had, it has just exploded, exploded into input from, obviously, board members. Councilman Pinto and I have been the intake source, but board members have become very deeply involved in the process. Town department heads, deputies, mid-management personnel, and quite frankly, a very significant number of town employees at all levels have really been inputting us. I would be getting some input, I think, from outside agencies as well, and the hunt is on for...
We have, you know, our ABZ is going to be doing the search for new control and deficit control.
So what, the old five-man, seven-man org, it just transcended all of that.
I guess they didn't care what Pinto had to say.
And I've indicated to the media over the past week or so that, happily, I am to say that we're getting so much input, and good input, that in the near future, shortly, because I have to go first as the town supervisor, just like I proposed the budget, I come forward, present it to the board, and then they do what they will with it, I have to come forward with the bottom line here. What, what is the result of all of these, all of this input and all of these recommendations? And not only that, but I should, because I'm, my position has always been, I got us into this mess, and I gotta get us out of this mess. So I, there is, there really has come together in my mind, some of it in my notes, there really has come together a pretty comprehensive plan on how to attack the problem. There are no problems that the town is facing that are not fixable. All of the medicine that we need to take is already in our medicine cabinet. We have the authority and the power to take all the steps that are necessary to correct the current financial circumstances that we are in. We really don't need any help from anybody. Not that there was Scoffit help that's being offered, but we don't really need anybody's help at this point. We don't need any bills from other levels of government or what have you. We're readily capable of getting ourselves out of this. I made the effort, Rob, back in, I guess it was in 11 and 12, I thought I did enough to avert the problem. I came up short, you know? This is not the first trip around the block. You know, we've had financial difficulties when I was a councilman, when I first became supervisor. And in 11 and 12, we were in, we're in serious condition, the yellow lights were flashing. I thought, I thought I took enough steps, or strong enough steps, to avert the problem, but I came up short. I have no other way to say it. If I could go back and do it again, I'd do it differently, but unfortunately, I can't. So now I need to do it now. But I need to do it in the form of a proposal. Obviously, ultimately, the board and the public will pass upon that plan. That plan, I was actually, a week or two ago, was thinking might be revealed as early as this week, but I still need to know that before I pull the trigger, that I hit the target. But this is not being charged here, Tommy, by the way. I don't want to have, I don't want a repeat of what happened in 11 and 12 when I missed. So this time, I want to get it right, and I'm relying on a lot of information, a lot of input, and verifying it all. But I think in fairly, relatively short order, over the next few weeks, maybe sooner, I'll come forward with what I think would be a good start for this board to work with, for the public, for the public to see and comment on, and we'll see where it goes from there.
Can you tell me, when you first enacted the board, I believe you made Councilman Pinto the chairman or the head of the board. Mr. Pinto, can you tell me, how many times has this board met to date?
We don't, we don't have a task force.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Joe. I mean, if I didn't make it clear, we thought it was gonna be as simple as getting a five-to-seven-nine person panel. It just, it just went way beyond that. I'm sorry, Joe.
I'm just saying, you know, we don't, we don't have a task force, as the president said. It's become more of a budgetary expense, you know, revenue generating type of committee. I know I've been involved with maybe three or four meetings, but I know that...
Three, I'm sorry, three or four meetings, yeah?
Three or four meetings. But I know that our finance department has been meeting regularly. You know, the meetings that I've been focusing on with department heads, the ones I've been involved with, is trying to get suggestions from them. That's what we can do to cut expenses off.
Did you guys ever, like, your original five? Did you ever meet the original five before you decided that it, that it blew it?
I think there wasn't an original five. I mean, you know, I think, the way, the way it's worked out, it's been members of the Controller's Office, the Finance Department, like I said, I was at three or four meetings, and department heads. But I know that the Finance Department and the Controller's Office have been meeting with department heads regularly to go over some ideas, and I've been told that we're expecting some sort of report from Christine Wiss shortly. I spoke with her last week, and Christine Wiss, I think, is a deputy controller, second deputy controller of the department.
All right, for some reason, they didn't include his statement that Christine Wiss is the deputy controller, deputy controller of the department. I thought that was interesting.
She's been, I guess, asked by, by Lenny Genova to come up with some sort of report, so I can't wait to see that report for the town board. She told me she was preparing it for the town board.
Thank you very much.
Robert, the, the concept of the task force blossomed into what I, what I thought I explained clearly before. If I didn't, I'll just restate it very simply. It just blossomed into everybody having something to say, in a helpful way, in a very good way, I might add. Surprisingly good. And so, the idea here is not form, it's substance, and all of the input that we've, that we've received, which I call the substance, regardless of the form it came to us in, whether it's a three-person committee or a 300-person committee, that's what's going to form the basis of what ultimately will be my proposals, and then everybody can work off of those. Add to it, subtract from it, like that.
Thank you. 377 is the proposal for the traffic survey in relation to Sayosa Park. I'm just curious why the town is footing the bill for this, not the proposed developers.
I don't...
It's actually being passed along.
It was in the middle of the sentence.
Is it, I'm sorry.
It was in the middle of the sentence.
It was a question I had earlier, and it's being...
I'm sorry, were you, were you still speaking?
No, that's all right. Councilman Cashin Gano will take it.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 go ahead, that's fine.
It's a question I had earlier, and it's being passed along to the developer.
Thank you very much.
I know it was just being passed along, I believe there are, yeah, well, he's right, it's being passed along. There's a fund that's set up, and it's the developer's obligation on many of these studies. I guess the resolution should, you know, I, let me just direct, I guess the town attorney, I don't know what else to direct us to. On many of these resolutions where we are passing along...
What's the resolution?
Excuse me?
377.
Oh, 370?
Seven.
Or a seven, seven?
Seven.
Yeah, on many of these revolution, revolution, Revolution Number Nine. On many of, you remember Revolution?
They cut all this out.
The Beatles. On many of these resolutions where there is a, as the councilman accurately indicated, there's a pass-along, it really isn't a pass-along in the sense that here's the bill. They actually set up a fund, do they not?
The resolution says that.
Oh, it says that? Where does it say that? I don't remember seeing it.
The funds are available to satisfy the encumbrance in the amount of $50,000. It says this account has been established by the office of directed financing utilizing funds provided by the applicant for the proposed Sayosa Park development. According to Section 110.8 of the Town Court, which is the trust.
You realize how you're just embarrassed, the town supervisor.
In any, in any event, I had the exact same question, so I wasn't...
Don't feel, I'm a good company.
I needed five minutes.
Fellas, fellas, you know what I would do, though? You're right, I got it. But not everybody who reads that is a lawyer.
I'm a lawyer, and I still understand.
And I missed it, too. There probably be a bolder statement on these things that simply says, "Cost to be incurred by the developer, not the town." I'm sorry, Rob.
That's okay, thank you very much. A great explanation, thank you very much. 387. I would just like to bring your attention to the, I think it's the fifth paragraph. This is the, the street restoration down in Stillwater Avenue. And this restoration reads, or rather, excuse me, this resolution reads, "Whereas Richard T. Betts, Commissioner of Department of Public Works by memorandum dated July 1, 2016, has recommended that the Town Board authorize a reimbursement in the amount of $32,444.44 to Mr. Santi Greco, 135 Stillwater Avenue, Massapequio, New York, due to the resident using his own contractor." And then, in the backup information, there's a couple of letters. One of them is from Frank Anto Tomaso. He's, I think he's here today. He, I believe, is involved with Sidney Baum, and he writes a letter to Commissioner Betts that says, "The contract plans for the referred contract require significant property restoration at House Number 135, Stillwater Avenue."
Cut out Stillwater Avenue.
Due to a change in road grade.
You get...
Cut out, due to a change in the road grade.
Thank you.
Well, we kind of got mixed up, because, but anyway. "Prior to construction, the homeowner attended a homeowner notification meeting held at Madgeri Post Park, where the homeowner expressed his concerns regarding proper restoration of his driveway and entry consisting of intricate decorative pavers, asphalt pavement, stone block retaining walls, and underground site lighting. When the project commenced, we met with the town's contractor, Landtech, and the homeowner to discuss restoration at Number 135. Landtech felt that their crews did not have the expertise to complete the work to the satisfaction of the homeowner. We estimate the value of the work that was contractually required by Landtech utilizing the contract bid items attached as a summary and the measurements of cost based on the contract items bid, which totaled $32,444.44." Now... Well, I don't know if you caught it, but they, they cut, they admitted a statement right here. All right, let's go back. "The Landtech and the homeowner to discuss restoration at Number 135. Landtech felt that their crews did not have the expertise to complete the work to the satisfaction of the homeowner. We estimate the value of the work that was contractually required by Landtech utilizing the contract bid items attached as a summary and the measurements of cost based on the contract items bid, which totaled $32,444.44." Now, there's also a letter from the homeowner. This happens to be in my neighborhood, actually. I walk by this gentleman's house every day, and I just have some, some documents, some pictures here. I'm really confused, because when you read the letter from the homeowner, I mean, allegedly there's some sort of grade issue with the new street and this gentleman's driveway that he felt his driveway would have to be regraded, and somehow the town agreed that Landtech couldn't do the work, and now we're giving him $32,000 to do the work. And the first thing I'd like to submit to the board is, this is a picture from the Nassau County website. This shows the gentleman, this 135 Stillwater, the property, you know, diameter. I know, Mr. Cashin Gano, I believe that's your expertise. You could see, you could see, like, the real estate, the property, you're into the property. And what I also have also is, I have some photographs here. These are from Google Earth. These photographs were taken prior to the road work being done. Okay, so you could see the initial grade, the existing driveway. And I have some photographs I actually took this morning that show the same area, and quite frankly, although there's been a lot of work that's done to the gentleman's driveway, the grade hasn't been changed. The greater the road... hasn't been changed, the grade of the, of the road doesn't look like it was changed, and it's not affecting anybody else's house. So what I'd like to know is, how, how many, how many other people, excuse me for a second, let me just up past these old photographs, huh? How many other people, homes in this project were affected, similar, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, Rob, hold on a second, what's going on? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, oh, go ahead, Rob.
I just wanted to know a couple of questions. Actually, I have one more, uh, one more document, I'd just like to turn it to you as a FOI request. Um, I'd just like to know, for, for this work that, that we're now paying for, um, were there permits applied for, uh, actually, if you look at one of the photographs, there's a wall that's built across the road, that's not that gentleman's property, I, I would assume that if he wanted to build something in the road, he would need some sort of, uh, variance, or, it's cer-, it's certainly the road, it's not his property, and it, it just, I'm, I'm really, I mean, I don't know what to make of this. It, it looks like this gentleman wrote a letter to Mr. Anto Tomaso, Mr. Anto Tomaso, they got together and they agreed that somehow the town should be reimbursing this guy $32,000.
Um, uh, I seen hands go, uh, Commissioner, you want a, uh, former Commissioner, former Commissioner, you know, once a Commissioner, always a Commissioner, I guess.
I thought that was interesting, once a Commissioner, always a Commissioner, but that's left out.
Would you like to podium? You know what, I think you do need to podium Frank, because you don't get on the video, otherwise.
My name is Frank Anto Tomaso, I am a partner at Sidney Bound, supervisor councilman, you all know me, I used to be the Commissioner of Public Berksia. This, uh, this road job, by the way, Stillwater Avenue, was the last of the Nassau Shores road raising jobs that the Town of Voice debate did. This was the only area that was not raised back in, in the early seventies. Uh, the roads were raised approximately two feet, and the, uh, the, many of the property owners' properties included in the contract had to be improved, because as a result of raising the roads, to prevent water from running back into the driveways and into the homes, we had to do work on private property, this was all authorized by the town board. In this one instance, the homeowner wanted to do the work himself, he, he did a takeoff on the quantities that would have been done under our contract, he agreed to the numbers, and he did in fact do the work himself, and contrary to Mr. Rip.
Just want to point out that this word is quantities, not properties, okay? It, it makes a big difference.
He raised the, the driveway at least 12 inches, if not more, so the work was properly done. Uh, my construction inspector is here to verify it, and the commissioner authorized it, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
All right, stand by. Tom, did you want to add anything to that?
I believe under the resolution, it's clear that the town is paying for the $32,000 going to this red building, and it's reimbursed from Land Tech.
Okay.
Zero cost for the town.
Okay, Robert, does that, does that help?
Um, I'll tell you what, I, I just put a FOI request in, I'd love to see the building file and all the permit applications for this work, for the variance and stuff, and, um, while I agree that, uh, while I agree that-
Now, I didn't ask to see the town applications, I asked to see specific documents, right? I'd really like to see the building file and specific documents, not just town applications.
It, it, while I agree that the money might be being backed out of this particular deal, it, we are paying Land Tech for the work, for the Stillwell Road Project, right? Okay, thank you.
I would assume.
You want to say something?
Yes, yes, I'd like to.
We are, we are, but the answer to the question is obviously yes, is it not?
Yeah, the answer is yes. However, all of the work that was done for the roads and on the private property did not and does not require permits from the town, it's authorized by the town.
Yeah, we know that.
Thank you.
I, I also want to point out, listen, I'm not an engineer, I don't pretend to be, but keep in mind, uh, we're all fami-, well, those of us who are familiar with Nassau Shores and the Massapeaker area generally are aware of the difficulties in, uh, down in Nassau Shores on some of these, uh, roads. Uh, this is a particularly difficult project, and it would, you would only expect that, um, there would be bumps in the road, no pun intended, in getting it done, it's a tough project.
I could tell you, I could tell you, out of my own personal experience, I had the road redone in my, in front of my house, and, um, I actually have my 214 535I in the shop right now being repaired, because when I drive out of my driveway now, there's, there's a two-inch drop, and the front of my car got smashed, so had I have known that, I could have asked to repair my road myself and be reimbursed for it, I probably would have done that, and, uh, I'm sorry, but I, I disagree with Mr. Anto Tomaso. If, if, if there's work done on, on a residence in the Town of Voice debate, there needs permits done, there, there's, I don't believe there's any waiver process that the town can authorize work without permits, so that, that's, that's my final word on that, I don't know. Thank you, if nobody else has anything else to say on that one.
Okay, Rob, do you need me?
No, I just got to get to the councilman, let's see. Is there any work that needed permits?
What's that, Rob?
Is there any work that needed permits? What work would it need?
I don't know, we should, we should find out. Was there permanent work, was there work done here that needed to be permitted but was not permitted?
I don't think there was work done. Absolutely not.
All right, you heard Frank Anto Tomaso say absolutely not, but that's not true, we know that now.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. There's apparently a disagreement. I thought, I thought he just said that all the work done there to the property and to the road didn't need any permits, because the town authorized it.
No, I, I think he just repeated that.
That's correct.
Okay.
Does not require.
So, so this gentleman didn't need any permits to do his driveway or any of his work, because the town authorized it?